Collier County, Board of County Commissioners, Community Redevelopment Agency Board, Airport Authority, Meeting Agenda. Board of County Commission Chambers, Collier County Government Center, 3299 Tamiami Trail East, 3rd Floor, Naples, Florida 34112. November 13th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner Andy Solis, District 2, BCC Chair. Commissioner William L. McDaniel Jr., District 5, BCC Vice Chair, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Donna Fiala, District 1, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Bert Saunders, District 3. Commissioner Penny Taylor, District 4. Notice: All persons wishing to speak on an agenda item must register prior to the presentation of the agenda item to be addressed. All registered speakers will receive up to three minutes unless the time is adjusted by the chairman. Requests to address the Board on subjects which are not on this agenda must be submitted in writing with explanation to the county manager at least 13 days prior to the date of the meeting and will be heard under public petitions. Public petitions are limited to the presenter with a maximum time of 10 minutes. Any person who decides to appeal a decision of this Board will need a record of the proceeding pertaining thereto and therefore may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Collier County Ordinance #2003-53 is amended by 2004-05 and 2007-24 requires that all lobbyists shall before engaging in any lobbying activities, including but not limiting to addressing the Board of County Commissioners, register with the clerk to the Board at the Board Minutes and Records Department. If you are a person with a disability who needs any accommodation in order to participate in the proceedings, you are entitled at no cost to you the provision of certain assistance. Please contact the Collier County Facilities Management Division located at 3335 East Tamiami Trail Suite 1, Naples, Florida 34112 or call 252-8380. Assisted listening devices for the hearing impaired are available in the Facilities Management Division. Lunch recess is scheduled for 12 noon till 1:00 p.m. Item 1: Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. 1A Reverend Beverly Duncan of Naples United Church of Christ. Item 2: Agenda and Minutes. 2A Approval of Today's Regular Consent and Summary Agenda as amended. Ex parte disclosure provided by Commission members for consent agenda items. 2B October 9, 2018 BCC Regular Meeting Minutes. 2C October 23, 2018 BCC Regular Meeting Minutes. Item 3: Awards and Recognitions. Item 3D Employee of the Month. 3D1 Recommendation to recognize Carlos Cabrera, Maintenance Worker, Public Services Department, as the October 2018 Employee of the Month. Item 4: Proclamations. 4A Proclamation Designating November 2018 as Paddle Sports Month in Collier County to be accepted by Mike Devlin, President, Friends of the Paradise Coast Blue Way Paddling Trail. 4B Proclamation Recognizing the Big Cypress Chapter, National Society Daughters of the American Resolution for 50 Years of Service to Collier County to be accepted by Judy Goby-Oxtoby, Shirley Horley, and Brigitte Van de Hoven-Smith. 4C Proclamation Designating November 2018 as National Hospice and Paladin of Care Month in Collier County and recognizing the professional staff and volunteers who provide care to patients up to their final moments to be accepted by Representatives of a Vow Hospice, Jason Roa, Phyllis Hall, Annalee Smith, Rebecca Caton, and Mark Beland. 4D Proclamation Designating November 18 through 24, 2018 as National Farm City Week in Collier County to be accepted by Brian Gogan, 2018 Chairman of the Farm City Barbecue, Cindy Woolley, President of the Farm City Barbecue, and Collier County Inc. and Representatives of Collier County 4H Association, Loot Youth Leadership Collier County, Junior Deputies League, and Key Club International. 4E Proclamation Honoring the Naples Botanical Garden for receiving the prestigious Museum Excellence Award from the Florida Association of Museums and to further recognize the dedication shown by its leadership to recover the garden and the ravages of Hurricane Irma to be accepted by Donna McGinnis, President and CEO, and Aaron Wolf Bell, Director of Development Operations. Item 5: Presentations. 5A Presentation of the Collier County Business of the Month for November 2018 to the Sanchez Casal Florida Club and Tennis Academy to be accepted by Coach Pavel Sluzel and Rogiello Di Haro. Also present is Bethany Sawyer of the Greater Naples Chamber. 5B Presentation to provide information on the implementation of the county-wide Alert Collier Emergency Notification System Initiative, which establishes a system of communications and warnings to ensure that the county's population is notified of developing emergency situations. Item 6: Public Petitions. Item 7: Public Comments on General Topics Not on the Current or Future Agenda. Item 8: Board of Zoning Appeals. 8A This item requires ex parte disclosure be provided by the Commission members. Should a hearing be held over this item, all participants are required to be sworn in. Recommendation to adopt a resolution of the Board of Zoning Appeals of Collier County, Florida providing the establishment of conditional use to allow church within an estate zoning district pursuant to Section 2.03.01b.1c.1 of the Collier County Land Development Code for property located in the southeastern corner of Golden Gate Boulevard and Collier Boulevard in Section 11, Township 49 South Rains, 26 East, Collier County, Florida. Item 9: Advertised Public Hearings. 9A Recommendation to approve by ordinance a Growth Management Plan Small-Scale Amendment specific to the conditional use of sub-district of the Golden Gate Area Master Plan to allow church uses for the Grace Romanian Baptist Church. 9B Recommendation to review and approve the 2018 Combined Annual Update and Inventory Report on Public Facilities and Schedule of Capital Improvements as provided for in Section 6.02.02 of Collier County's Land Development Code and Section 1.63.3177 Prence 3, Prence B, Florida Statutes and adopt a resolution that updates the five-year capital improvement schedules. Item 10: Board of County Commissioners. 10A This item to be heard at 9:30 a.m. Recommendation that the Board direct the county manager to bring back for consideration a determination that would allow the acquisition of the 28.46 acre hack property through the Conservation Collier Program. Item 11: County Manager's Report. 11A This item to be heard at 10:45 a.m. Recommendation to authorize staff to initiate an invitation-negotiate process for the development of housing that is affordable on the 1. County-owned Rainbridge Property and 2. The county-owned Manatee Property proposed to be co-located with a passive park as both properties were previously identified as suitable for the development of housing that is affordable in accordance with the community housing plan. 11B This item was continued from the October 23, 2018 BCC meeting. Recommendation to accept an update on the Stormwater Utility Initiative and provide direction to the county manager to develop a modified program for the future board consideration based on the recommendations outlined in the staff report. 11C Recommendation to award invitation to bid #18-7426 Jail Facilities Buildings, J1, J2 Chiller Plant, and HVAC Upgrades to Air Mechanical and Service Corp. for Chiller Plant HVAC Upgrades at Jail Facilities Building J1 and J2 in the amount of $1,394,000 and authorize the chairman to execute the attached agreement. 11D Recommendation to review the history of the anonymous complaint policy and support the practice limiting the acceptance of anonymous complaints for code enforcement and Domestic Animal Services Code complaints. Item 12: County Attorney's Report. Item 13: Other Constitutional Officers. Item 14: Airport Authority and/or Community Redevelopment Agency. Item 15: Staff and Commission General Communications. 15A Proposed Future Workshop Schedule. Item 16: Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussion of each item. If discussion is desired by a member of the Board, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For more information on consent agenda items, call 252-8586.
Item 17: Summary Agenda. This section is for advertised public hearings and must meet the following criteria: 1. A recommendation for approval from staff;
3. No written or oral objections to the item received by staff, the Collier County Planning Commission, or other authorizing agencies, or the Board prior to the commencement of the BCC meeting on which the items are scheduled to be heard. And 4. No individuals are registered to speak in opposition to the item. For those items which are quasi-dugistial in nature, all participants must be sworn in.